This conference will now be recorded.
And we'll call the meeting to order and start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic, our nation under God.
Justice, you're on.
Chris, what you may want to do also is ask the board members who are here that have established
Sure.
Do you allow, adopt a motion to allow Mr. Banks to participate fully by any circumstantial circumstances?
Okay, do we, do we need to adopt a motion to allow him to do that?
Yes.
Or we just need to?
And for Mr. Guy also, we need to authorize.
Okay, well, we, in a teness, say, we have Mr. Geppert, Mrs. Walsh, Mr. Tinkle, and Mr. Banks is online, and if I could get a motion to allow Mr. Banks and Mr. Guy to attend remotely.
So. So prove. Yeah, well, you jumped right through. Martin's been teaching.
I've got a motion, a second. A second motion, a second, any discussion? Okay, we'll call the roll. Mr. Banks.
Hi.
Mr. Geppert.
Hi.
Mrs. Walsh. Mr. Tinkle.
Hi.
Motion passes, so.
I think what you may want to do then is have a motion to appoint more of the board members as chairman pro temp until Mr. Guy appears or attends.
I make a motion to appoint Doug as the chairman pro temp, and that the other three of us are still to be taking the oath.
Okay, we have a second motion and a second. Call the vote. Mr. Banks.
Hi.
Mr. Geppert.
Hi.
Walsh.
Hi.
Mr. Tinkle, hi. And along those lines, that would be the appropriate time, in mind, there is to administer the oath of office to Mr. Geppert, Mrs. Walsh, and Mr. Tinkle. Do we stand, or?
I'm just going to read the.
However, you're comfortable. And basically, just ask them to raise their right hand, and then Vicki will, she's a Republican, the state of Florida, and then repeat after her, or do them all at the same time? Yes. I would suggest.
I do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution, government of the United States, the state of Ohio, the state of Florida.
Okay, if you can ask them to repeat after you.
And repeat after me, and I'll repeat it again, okay? So, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support and protect.
That I will support and protect and defend.
The Constitution and government of the state of Florida.
The Constitution.
The United States and the state of Florida.
The state of Florida. You can't remember all of them.
That I will do, I am dutifully qualified to hold the office.
Dutifully qualified to hold the office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well.
That I will well.
And faithfully perform the duties of.
And faithfully perform the duties of.
Supervisor.
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 On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations, very good, Vicki. And just for the record, to the board, to elect the officers, which is an exec, I would just suggest that we just ratify the prior actions as part of participation. So, Chris, you want to handle that, or have Mr. Banks as chairman pro temp?
Mr. Banks can take, take that over, and you said a, an action to ratify those motions?
Yes, just a motion to ratify the prior actions with regards to the chairman pro temp appearance by Mr. Guy.
Thank you.
You made a motion.
I made, I made that motion.
Well, Vicki, just ratify the prior.
So, we ratify the prior action and call the vote?
Yep. Mr. Tinkle made a motion, Mr. Geppert, second.
Okay, so I'll call the vote. Mr. Banks.
Hi.
Mr. Geppert.
Hi.
Mrs. Walsh.
Hi.
Mr. Tinkle.
Hi.
Motion passes. And I still do not have Mr. Guy online. I had talked to him earlier, and he said he was going to attend remotely.
Okay, um, so the question is, should we jump into a workshop and give Bill time to join and postpone the consideration of the election of officers until, until we finish the workshop? Or do we want to jump right into the election and, and election of officers and then, then go to workshop?
You can do the either one. Again, because the statute requires that basically, since in fact, from the last election, you appoint new officers, so if you want to do the workshop first, let's start the workshop.
Does, is there any, uh, any dissent in postponing the elections if we give Bill just a little more time and, and in case he got held up?
I'm buying with it.
We're all good with it, okay? So, uh, we're going to, we'll postpone the election of officers until the conclusion of the workshop, so, uh, Chris, let's go ahead and call the, the workshop to order at 3:10.
Okay, the workshop is now in order, and it is on the agenda, and we had an agenda item that was basically the set a date at a later time for a board advance, sort of that we had in 2018, and it was facilitated at that time by Joe Di Servo, but we wanted to start and get some input from the board members, and the last thing to do is discuss priorities that they have, and those we will include on a list at that workshop that we can expand on, but then ask the board members to prioritize those priorities as listed by each board member, but as a group.
Yeah, and what I would say, what I would say is, I think the, you know, having the workshop is definitely a good idea. I think that the question that I would have for the other board members is, is that something that we want Di Servo to facilitate? Do we want to find another facilitator? Do we want to self-facilitate? What's our, what's the point of direction or, or input from the other board supervisors?
Geppert, do you have any opinion on bringing in a professional facilitator, asking Mr. Di Servo to come back?
What he did the last time, sitting on the other side of that, seemed very appropriate, thorough. I was comfortable with that.
Mr. Tinkle?
Yeah, he's willing to do it.
And if he is not available, do you want us to secure another professional facilitator? Maybe someone from Board Association of Special Districts, or someone that does that type of thing?
I think he laid the groundwork for how to do it. I think he was great as a moderator. I think we could do it ourselves.
Was, was that a position?
I'm sorry.
Was that a paid position?
Yeah, he was paying on a 12-month basis for working with us, and I thought the meetings we had were very good. He comes from a position of an entity that is not the same as Gateway, CDD, which creates a little bit of deal because he's used to a Florida statute that is different than 721. Major way hat. A little bit different, and so some of the things that he was able to do, we're not able to do, which complicated a little bit, but there's, there's enough differences and commonality that I thought he did a really good job in the program that he set up, once we identified what our issues were. I thought he did a really good job of it, so if he would do it, I'd be, be very happy.
Okay. And I think maybe a point that may, maybe a point of, you know, a decision here is what we want to cover. You know, in the past, I think those workshops have been around driving, you know, improvement in our organizational structure, and you know, trying to become more efficient as a board, and I think we have put in motion a large majority of those initiatives and items. So, the, the question I have today is, what would be the point of focus in this, you know, supervisor workshop, kicking off the, the, this new board look? And Ed, I'd kind of go back to you first as a, since Bill's not here, as a, as a returning supervisor with tenure, what, what your focus, you think, would be? And then I've been on to Fabi and Bob.
Well, in, in preparation, thank you. In preparation for today, I enumerated 13 items. I did not prioritize them, but I indicated 13 items that I saw for board, board priorities in 2020, 2021. And in fact, I've made copies of them to pass out that you want later on. I can go over each one of them, but I would think that if each of us would develop our own set of priorities of what we see, and with a schedule of from top to bottom, highest to lowest priority, then somebody like Chris could take and put those together, because I'm sure there's going to be duplication, and then get those to, if Mr. Di Servo is available, get them to him for putting them in some type of a format that we can, we can go over. But anyway, that's what I've done. I, I identified 13 items that I thought were important for 2020, 2021.
Okay, so let's do this. I'm going to shift gears slightly. I'd say, let's, let's go into our, our conversations around, you know, our topics for improvement, which is kind of the intent of the, of the workshop that I've kind of called out. And then upon conclusion for that, I think if we put our list together, Chris, you and I can reach out to Joe and say, these are, these are our priorities, these are the things that we want to cover. Joe, do you think it's advantageous for you to lead this conversation? Or is it something more organic that we can just, we can work, you know, internally? How, how does that sound? Let's go through our ideas, because I've got some, and I'm sure Bob and Fabi have some input as well. So let's build our list together of improvements and things that we'd like to cover, whether it's in the, in the next workshop, or just areas that we'd like to address or focus on in, in this next year. And then we'll compile those and, and present them to Joe and see, get his recommendation on, on how to move forward. Is everyone in agreement?
Thanks, that's fine.
And Mr. Banks, what I would suggest, and after the board doing the workshop passes, you know, the good discussion, debate about them, that the formal action then to vote to adopt that, I'll call it, is initial starting list, Mr. Di Servo would take place during the meeting, I think under 3D may be appropriate. Because workshops, you can't take any formal action, but you can have, exactly reach consensus generally, and then take the formal action during the meeting.
Okay, yep. With that being said, Ed, you want to jump into your, your list of items that you want to discuss, and then, then we'll move on down the line?
Well, I can start with at least, I didn't look at it from more of an administrative position. I looked at it more from issues that we're facing, and I'll, I'll just give out my 13 items. Implement the capital reserve projects in the 001 and 004 accounts. Continue with pond bank restoration projects, determine the best source of financing, whether it's SRF or a bank loan. Continue to pond, or to start with pond aeration development in Gateway. Park improvement projects, looking at pickleball courts. Felling Reserve access emergency road project, continue with that. Roundabout construction observation, watch it closely. Sidewalk replacement, continue with that. Water meter repair, replacement issues, and those with, related to the center meters. The I-75 flowway crossing project and flowway rear replacement. Utility rate study implementation. Water reuse, major valve replacement project. Soccer field park long-term ownership evaluation and reevaluation upon standards, littoral placement improvements. Those were the 13 things I identified as issues for 2020, 2021.
Go over to the senior, the length, they'll have the code and everything. They should just be able to click on it, and she sends it over. Try that. I'm working to get Mr. Guy online.
Okay, and Ed, from an operational perspective, as far as how we run meetings, you know, any, any input on how we can just become more, you know, continue to be, drive efficiency as a board, or structure? You know, anything along those lines that, that you have any input on?
Two, two issues, Doug. One, because we're controlled as to what we can do, bringing the notice in the agenda, would like to have all board members to be more involved in the development of the agenda, such that if they have something that they may be wanting to make a motion on, at least it's in the agenda, such that we don't have to worry about postponing it another two weeks. And then the other one is, is that going a little bit away from our normal standard that was developed eons ago, which I have always had a distaste for, is when we have residents come to the microphone, I, I'm not in favor of getting into a debate with them or a discussion with them on things, but I certainly think that they deserve, when they ask a question, they deserve a response. Other than that, everything else, continuation.
Okay, great. I'll just move, I think Fabi, you're, I can, I think you're sitting next to Ed today. I'll, I'll move to you, and, and first welcome you to, to the board, you and Bob both. Really looking forward to the things we'll be able to accomplish with this, with this new board structure. But Fabi, there anything that, that you have that you've been able to see from the outside now, looking from the inside, areas of opportunity from how we, how we do things? Whether, my primary focus today was really on board improvement and efficiencies, but if you want to also follow behind Ed, if there's certain projects or initiatives that, that you feel is, is important for us to look at for 2021, I'll just kind of give you the floor.
All right, so I, in addition to what Ed has, I was just jumping in a couple items. I do believe that we need to take a look again at the lake improvement restoration project. I believe we also need to continue to look into the sidewalk and replacement of those areas. Flowway cleanup. And storm drain cleanup. And when it comes to administration, I believe we could do a better job in trying to get a succession plan ready for staff. So, just sitting from the other side, once somebody leaves, I feel like we don't have either the next person ready to go, or, you know, any direction on that. So I think from administration or development of staff, that's what I think we'd be looking at and doing a better job.
Great. Good. Was there a comment?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Well, I shared Ed's desire to look for alternatives in the lake bank restoration, because I firmly believe there's some opportunities there, not only in what we do, but how we do it. I would like to see some of our bidding processes. At least I'd like to have a better understanding of how some of these things are done.
Looks like you're on.
Because I don't think that we are always getting the lowest possible bid, and I don't know that we're notifying all available bidders, no matter that they would, other than the public record, but if we have known suppliers, we might want to consider using them. Pond aeration is another one that I, I share with, with Ed at, as well as the current work on the access road, the colic. Not only to get that behind us, to get the DRI amended appropriately, but then to wrestle with the cost. Who's going to pay what to get it done? This board hasn't considered, I don't believe, a downspout initiative yet, greater gateway. But one of the things that we determined to tell them, and it has borne out to be true, but if you bury the downspouts, you won't have near the erosion or the washout problem. If we, we ignore that part of it, then we're going to be restoring lake banks forever. Another item that I would like to see the board address is customer service. The phone number right now, the phone trees, and the difference between the adjacent building and this building from the outside are a little bit cumbersome. I think that could be approved, and maybe there's plans in place to do that, or at least publish the current phone numbers of where people are and how we get them. The permit criterion manual. That's come up a number of times, and I don't think we have a way to, to formalize some of the things that, that's suggested to the board, and in past actions where I think the board agreed with it, but the final conclusion of making it a part of the manual needs to be strengthened. And the, the manual ought to be good regardless of a particular community that's been finished. If a community is coming in to develop, into Gateway, like Arborwood, they should benefit from all the things we've learned, and I don't know that that was done over Arborwood, so I'd like to look at that strength. And then, Ed, you had a good point because about resident comments. I've been sitting here for four or five years, and if residents come up, and they say their piece, and everybody nods, and they leave, but there's never a close the loop or an assignment given to either follow-up or say, no, we're not going to do that, or it's a great idea, let's do it. So I would like to see that strengthened, so that there is meaning when the people come up. There's some people I've seen that come up four or five times, always say the same thing, leave. If we're not going to do it, we'll just tell them not to do it. So that's what I had.
Great, thanks, and I just want to make a note that Bill has entered the meeting, I think, a couple minutes ago, so let's say 3:20. That Bill Guy is in attendance, virtually. Hey, Bill.
Hi.
So, we have jumped into the workshop. We tabled the officer election until, until you were able to join. So what we're doing now is we're, we're kind of going through a roundtable to get input from the different supervisors on areas of opportunity, whether it's, you know, operationally, or how we conduct ourselves from a board perspective, how we conduct meetings, to what our individual input is around, you know, projects or initiatives in 2021 that the board should be looking at, whether they're existing or, or net new. So, do you want to take a few minutes, or do you want a little bit more time to think about it before, and, and I'll go? It's up to you.
Yeah, let me think about it for a minute.
All right, I'll jump into mine then. So, um, I was looking at this from, from more kind of procedures and from an operational perspective, but I, I do like the, the comments that were made around initiatives and, and things that we should be focused on, and, and I definitely want to make sure that we compile these and, and address them in more detail in our, in our workshop and offsite that we, that we were previously discussing. The areas that, that I've called out is, which I think aligns with even the public comment item that was brought up, but I'd like either the, the district manager, or whether it's the business manager, or, or someone to keep track of action items, or items that are tabled during the meeting. That could even consist of new business that may come up during the meeting, and let's have a summary of that at the end of the meeting, so we, we can make sure that we've identified, you know, what's in the parking lot, what's, what's been tabled. And I think public comments could be included in that, so we make sure that we're following up on items that were previously brought up, but no action was taken, or the action was, was, was tabled. I think there is an opportunity for potential or slated agenda items to be read at the end of, of each meeting for board member awareness. So, upon conclusion, maybe before we get to supervisor comments, the district manager can, can call out what items we have scheduled for the next board meeting on the agenda, or items that are being considered. And I think this is something that you brought up a couple times in the past, more transparency and visibility to what's on the agenda. I think this would give us an opportunity to, to at least have a little bit of transparency into what's coming. We know that items do come up, and it may not be a perfect solution, but I think there is an opportunity for us to at least identify during the, the board meeting what may be coming in the next. Items, during the board meeting for me, there are items that require more in-depth or prolonged discussion. I think when we start getting into those types of situation that we pull the, the item, so we can do more due diligence, whether it's staff, or if there's more information that the board may, needs, or, or we, we table it for a workshop, I think on occasion, we have gotten into very lengthy discussions around items, and in my opinion, either when that happens, either the, the item is more controversial and needs to be vetted out more, or the board just has not had enough information or time to review, so we use the board meeting itself to go into detail. So what I'd like to do is, when we find ourselves in those situations in the future, that one, we pull those and either push them to the next board meeting, or set them up for a workshop, so we don't, we don't have these elongated conversations during a particular board meeting. And that's just help us drive efficiency and keep us, you know, running in a very timely manner.
Doug, can I repeat on that one?
Yeah.
It's been a pet peeve for years. I think part of the problem that creates that is sunshine law, and I think I've found a way to get around it.
Tony. I wish you guys never used that word. There's a script for it, and it says, avoid all evasive devices.
I'll use the word resolving that.
I think I was testing my.
And, and that is, is that if we can take, and if we have an issue coming up, I think if each of us, and tell me correctly if I'm wrong, but I think that each of us can relay our information to the district manager, and the district manager then, through the disclosure of, don't repeat this, don't do this, don't do that, all those things you put at the bottom of an email, Tony, at least everybody is informed coming into the meeting as to the position. Like, I can't call Bob, I can't call Fabi, I can't call anybody to talk about this stuff until we get to the meeting, and what that does is just burns up time. But what I could do is to put down what my thoughts are on it, get it to the manager, and let the manager disperse that, along with anybody else's, such that when we come into the meeting, that we're somewhat informed, and we don't spend all that time doing what we could have done just by reading ahead of the meeting.
I will double check that, because again, the idea of forwarding that information you receive from somewhere, as far as positions, statements, and sending the position statement, I'll double check based on a attorney general's opinion on that, because that can get into a touchy area, but with the board's approval, I will double check.
Well, I think, as, as a way I understand it talking to others, is that as long as you don't indicate how you are going to vote on it, there is nothing wrong. Now, you mentioned the implication of how you're going to vote on it. That's what it said, but you're not saying how you're going to vote on it, you're just giving what the, the positives and negatives are of the point.
Yeah, and that's where it gets the slippery part, I mentioned, yes, because that does give an inference or implication or a preview as to what the other person is thinking in the public comment. I will check that, and next board meeting, we'll discuss it.
And then.
It's all up to our sunshine laws.
And then the other one along that line, Doug, is the, the issue of personnel-related issues. I think what we need to do is look closely at having set executive sessions to where some of those things can be handled, and boy, that's, that's another slippery slope. But I, I don't like to go to meetings and get into personnel-related issues in the sunshine, and I, and I don't think that we have to. So I think that maybe what we do is schedule whenever the event occurs, or whenever the need for the event occurs, that we have more executive sessions on personnel-related issues.
Again.
I think.
The sunshine law, and the ability to talk about personnel matters in a closed-door session is not generally available. But I will double check that also as to whether there's a limited situation.
Yep.
Check right now.
And I think so, Ed, I, in regards to being able to vet more items out, I, I think one of the things that I was thinking about too is, is leveraging our workshops a little bit more for that, because that's a great opportunity for us to have open dialogue back and forth, which we can do it, you know, in the sun, without any decisions being made, but that gives us an opportunity to, to really banter back and forth as a, as a board. I think that's where there is true opportunities for us to kind of voice our opinions. So I would look to enhance the, the workshops for some of those items that, that we need more, more conversation prior to a decision being made. So I agree with you there. You know, and again, I want to make sure that, that maybe we can find better ways to, to introduce our ability to follow up on items, so when we bring stuff up. our ability to follow up on items. So when we bring stuff up, if things weren't decisions, but it's something that we watch items or follow up, I think we need to maybe incorporate something in the board meetings where we've got just some updates on this follow-up items. And they might fall into, you know, our committee reports or staff reports, but I feel like sometimes we don't always follow up or keep track of everything that we need to.
Mr. Banks, if I'm not a board member, just maybe a citizen. Some other districts I represent have what they call action items at the end of each agenda or in the middle of each agenda. And they carry it over from a meeting to meeting and they'll indicate the standard, pick items off and put items on and where tasks are assigned. And I can send Chris and board members examples of that from other districts. They've been very helpful both to the board and to the staff and the community to keep track of things. So I think that's an excellent idea.
Yeah, great. And I think that's, you know, it can fall into, you know, what could potentially be an agenda item for approval. It could be an item that's BAU, you know, that's just something we want to keep attention on. Maybe it's a maintenance item or some type of request or whatever. So Tony, that'd be great if you can deliver that through so we can use that as an example. One of the areas that I've always been a big fan of, and I think we've started to do it, but I'd like to look at expanding it, is our use of committees. And I think with the PONs committee that we've got, we've had traffic committees in the past. We've had a lot of different committees. I'd love to see us expand that out because it's an opportunity for us to bring in, you know, some subject matter experts or those that might be passionate about certain areas to vet some things out prior to items coming to the board and to be able to work with staff to get an outsider's viewpoint. So we're just having a more holistic approach. I think it's, you know, if you want to look at where it's worked very well, we can look at Pelican. I think Pelican has several committees and those have served to be, I think, very, very efficient. So I would love to see us expand out. To that point, I think every committee should have a board sponsor, someone that is going to attend meetings, but really serve as, you know, there to provide guidance and oversight when needed. And I think we, most committees have, there's a board member that is passionate about that area or has some kind of expertise. So it's something that I like to see there. Along those same lines, we used to do, I think it was called a president's meeting or advisory board. I'd like to look at us bringing back the monthly occurrence where we bring in the HOA presidents, get those together. We, I think we did it a couple of years ago. Ed, I don't know if you, I'm sure you probably took, you know, participated in those in the past, but I think it's a great way for us to stay in tune with the HOAs and use them as leverage for advisory or oversight for the things that we're doing. But it would be a nice two-way street. So I'd love to get the supervisor input on bringing that routine back. So again, I think just a couple of items and then I'll be done. Again, talking about the workshops, looking to enhance those. So again, allow for more discussion on complex issues. I think the workshops are a great opportunity for us to do regular reviews of the CIP and our major maintenance initiatives for ongoing calibration. So we should be looking at our maintenance, what I consider major maintenance initiatives and our capital improvement on a regular basis, like once a month or at least once a quarter to make sure that we've got this calibrated and that if we've got any new items, that they're sequenced appropriately. The, I'll just echo on top of Flavia. She had mentioned staff succession planning. I think that is something that definitely, there's an area of opportunities there. But that's it for me. So Bill, if there's any comments, go ahead. If anyone wants to make a comment before we go to Bill.
One comment, Doug, Pelican was a very conscious decision to call the groups that were supporting feedback in their community association board to call them work groups and not committees. And I don't know if one term, we were led to believe one term that a connotation of limitations under sunshine and the other ones were a lot more flexible in what they could do and the people that can participate.
Yeah, the work groups were not an official organization of the board and not a point of others. Just as I understand, so like, and hot volunteers.
Okay.
Yeah, but it helped that you could get a lot more participation with those groups.
Okay. I think that's something that, you know, we can look at in the future. I think we, you could always get some clarity on work group versus committee and what's the, you know, what's the kind of restrictions or roles and responsibilities for each one of those that will probably help us determine which is more appropriate for our needs. Okay. Bill, I'll jump over to you.
Thanks, Doug. I've listened to this with a lot of interest, reminding myself, who has been on this board now for 10 years, where we started from, as far as I'm concerned, and where we are now. And in my view, we have made a world of progress. Now, that's not to say that we all want to sit down and go home because that's not going to happen. But what it is to say is that we should acknowledge the work that staff and the board have done, say, in the last 10 years. And understand that we have to acknowledge the work that the staff and the board have done, but remind ourselves that a lot of that improvement, a lot of that work is due to the hard work and understanding of staff and the district manager that we appointed a few years ago and has worked very hard to get us to what I think is a very good position. The fact that it's not as perfect as I or some others of you might think doesn't mean that we don't have to acknowledge it and make sure that the district manager knows that we understand and appreciate what he's done and be sure that he knows that we appreciate the work that he and his staff have done and continue to support his recommendations. Now, a district manager without the support of the board is not a district manager. And if the district manager doesn't have the support of his staff, then he's not a district manager. So the district manager's job is a very gracious job that has to be worked on every day by the hour by the district manager so that he continues to get the support from his board and the support from the supervisors. Having said that, I believe that we can look forward to making a lot of improvements in the district in the years to come, never forgetting that we don't work for each other and ourselves. We work for the citizens of this district. And if they've lost their jobs in the last few months, we're going to have to take that into consideration when we tell each other and district manager what kind of budget we're expecting from you. And that it may not be as large and grand as we'd like, but that it will come about at a time when it's necessary. And if it takes a little while longer to put it together than we thought, hoped, that's just the way it's going to have to be. The staff that Chris has put together at this point, I think is a very good one. And hopefully we can support him in the near future and keep things rolling so that we all see the progress that we're making. Thank you very much.
Great, thanks, Bill. And I appreciate everyone's input. And I think the purpose for that exercise for today is as we bring in new board members and we start our journey down the next couple of years of collaborating and working together as a team, understanding where our priorities lie at this point, both from an improvement perspective or initiatives, along with operationally and procedurally. I think it really helps us, you know, kind of set stage for areas of focus moving forward. And what I'd like to do is compile some of these procedure and operational items for us to discuss for implementation or modification during our board advance, as well as add some of these newer items that have come up or even some of the existing as we go and validate our capital improvement plan or maintenance initiative, again, in our board advance as well. You know, and I think when I look at the board's progress, just in the time that I've been on the board, I think we have always looked at areas to improve and, you know, as a board, how we operate. I mean, the fact that we're averaging about a two-hour meeting, I think, is incredible considering where we started. I mean, most of the time we get out before the sun goes down, which I think was unheard of in the past. We had those three- and four-hour meetings, which is crazy. So thank you all for your input. I appreciate it. Tony, I'm going to hand it over to you so you can complete your portion around the sunshine law review and then we'll close the workshop and get into officer selection.
Very good. Thank you. Hopefully I can operate this properly and I think you can see it on the screen. Thank you for this opportunity and do a PowerPoint presentation on sunshine law. It was working.
Hold on a second. Need George to try it now.
There you go. Again, whenever you have a question about a sunshine law, we always stress available, nor myself to call, and Zach LaMardo also in our office. We have three attorneys that are practicing in the local government area. And call us if you have any questions about any activity, which you need information, including the sunshine law. The Florida League of Cities has a free legal consultation service for any attorney representing an elected official through their attorney, and you can call them. But also we have people we know up in the First Amendment Foundation, Attorney General's Office and Commission on Ethics to discuss if you have any questions on the sunshine law. If you have any questions about it, please call us, email us, text me. I think you all have my mobile phone number. If not, I'll give that to you and I'll try to get back as soon as possible. Sometimes I'm not as timely as I want to be. Sometimes I'll get back as soon as we can. Government sunshine law. It's an important feature of Florida law. This is just a little editorial cartoon that was published about a newly elected official that hasn't included on open government laws, little bubbles, I can't wait to do the public's business, next bubble, let's discuss this in private. And a lot of people have that added to this board and this community has been terrific about the sunshine law. But there are a number of examples, and we'll get into it later on, where people are not so careful about applying the sunshine law. Florida's government, the sunshine law, it provides a constitutional, that's important, and statutory right of notice of and access to governmental proceedings of public boards or commissions at both the state and local level. It was embodied, adopted by the Florida voters many years ago in the Florida constitution. And I'll print out and provide copies of the PowerPoints. You can have it whenever you wish. But it's basically all meetings of any collegial public body, which includes community development districts. It says, "or special district at which official acts are to be taken or at which public business of such bodies to be transacted or discussed shall be open in notice to the public, except with respect to meetings exempted pursuant to this section or specifically closed by the constitution." And as with any law, there was a black and white, relatively short version of that. Then the courts and the attorney general office have their opportunity to provide opinions and decisions as to what does that mean? What is a meeting? What are official acts? What are the exemptions? And again, following the constitution, which is like the US constitution, the Florida statutes implemented it in section 286.011. And again, all meetings of any board of any political subdivision or agency in Florida sunshine law were considered a political subdivision, except as otherwise provided in the constitution are declared to be public meetings open to the public at all times and reasonable notice and formal action and has to be taken at such a public meeting. And then the meetings of the meeting have to be properly recorded and the records shall be opened to public inspection. When we talk about nature of minutes, we've had this discussion before. Some entities use verbatim transcripts. They are recorded for. Some agencies have a short version of just like an action, a motion made to approve budget, motion second adopted. Others are in between. So there's variations on it, but they all have to be recorded with the minutes and records of the entity open to public inspection. Three basic requirements then. And all meetings of public boards or commissions, including the committees that they appoint, must be open to the public. Reasonable notice of such meetings must be given. In minutes of the meetings must be taken and promptly recorded. There will get into some specific requirements that apply to community development districts. Not all governmental bodies are the same with regards to the notice requirements in this. And basically, if two or more members from the same board or committee convene to discuss a matter which will foreseeably, I always had reasonably foreseeably, come before that board for action, then the sunshine law applies. We take a very conservative position on the sunshine law. Even if you vote on something today, that item, I've seen this happen over and over again, may come back before the board in the future. Topics you discussed today are going to be topics that will be discussed five years from now. So my advice always is even if you took action today, you still cannot talk about that action to other board members because it may reasonably foreseeably come back in the future. It's a.
Tony, can you go back to that? I have a question about this.
Yes, sir.
So let's say, you know, it's my position that we look to enhance work groups or committees. And it's also my position that I would love to have a board sponsor aligned to those work groups or committees. I also believe that, you know, that the vice chair should, that their kind of participation and oversight should be expanded in these areas where, you know, the vice chair would, you know, and this is just my opinion of what I would like to see happen, become more involved in the oversight of committees and work groups. So if that's the case, my question is, if you have a work group or a committee, can you have two board members in attendance? Let's say as an example, you might have a sponsor and maybe, and a vice chair who was, their responsibility would be kind of oversee the committees. So my question is, can you have two board members in a committee or workshop meeting?
My opinion is you can provide it, number one, provide notice of that, but also provide that there's no interaction between those two board members. I think also if you look at the agendas that we publish for the meeting, I think we also say members of the committees of the district may also be in attendance, including but not limited to, because that provides notice to the public that you may have two members from the Pelican Reserve Advisory Committee. You may have two members from the PONs Standards Committee. You may have two members from another committee present during the meeting. So you can do that, but generally try not to have interaction, but that is fine, provided you provide requisite notice.
Yep. And I would also say that we probably, we have some subject matter experts or those that are heavily involved in these very specific areas, probably more so today than we ever have. And I'll use PONs as an example. We have more subject matter experts around PONs on this board today than I think we've ever had in the past. So being able to limit board participation in some meetings around PONs to just one board member, I think, you know, might be tough moving forward. So the clarification is, yes, you can have two board So, the clarification is, yes, you can have two board members attend meetings. To define if they're interacting as part of the, the conversation of the meeting or the work group, as long as the conversation isn't directly bantered between board member to board member, it's, again, it's, it's permissible, correct?
Well, I would not recommend that with the two board members. Again, I, I think that, again, even if it's noticed, maybe appropriate, but then you have to have minutes taken. So, it'd be basically a, a meeting of the board without a forum. And then you run into some other issues. So, I, I think the best approach, if you have a liaison to a committee, and that liaison's in attendance, and another board member wants to attend, I'm, my opinion is that's okay, provided you've noticed it, but I would not, I would recommend against any interaction.
Okay, all right, we're going to have to more, have more conversation around that. I, I think, how to handle some of that. So, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Again, types of boards, as you mentioned, nice segue. Any boards or commissions of any state agency or authority, or of any county municipal corporation or political subdivision. Again, it's interesting, the Florida statutes, they define districts sometimes as local government, sometimes as political subdivision. We fall into many different categories, and the district qualifies as a political subdivision for purposes of Section 286.011. And it applies to the CDD boards and your committees, and like the city tours, which is advisory. Items that are outside the scope of the sunshine law don't require the requisite notice, meetings in record, in the minutes. Our board created fact-finding committees, and we've done that in the past. If you recall, I think years ago, I think Dolores, I forget who else, but a number of board members. I think they have been Ed Cecil too, I mean others, before they ran the board. Fact-finding committees, they just come back with facts. Here are the facts in this particular issue. They're not subject to the sunshine law. Staff committees, in other words, if I get with Chris and Georgia and Laura or Leslie and Danny talking about things, those are not covered. Private organizations are generally outside the scope, unless it's created by the public entity, which we don't have. In other words, if you have a county creates an economic development corporation, then that's subject to sunshine law. Interesting too, you like how the legislature exempted themselves. And the, and the courts say, "We have our own rules, so you can't regulate us." So, it's one of those, "We know what's better for you, and we will exempt ourselves." I kind of love the legislature. It does apply to members electing incumbent candidates, like we talked about recently. Outside the scope, non-incumbent candidates, and we had the memo or email I sent around on that. A different board, the sunshine law does not apply if the officials are members of different entities. Unless one of the officials has been douged, they have power to act on behalf of his or her entire entity. Now, as a PPA committee member can talk to a Stony Brook committee member, they can talk to a PONs committee member. You can talk to any board member of any other CDD or governmental body. It's not a sunshine law. Meeting the staff, it doesn't apply to meeting the staff by board members, unless staff is being used as a liaison between board members. It's called daisy chain or conduit. The, the courts have said, "You can't do indirectly what you are not allowed to do directly." You know, if I can't talk with Bob and Bob tells me something, then I go to Flavia, Flavia. Bob's position on such and such is that I can't do that. Years ago, I was meeting with a city council member of the city of Marco Island, and after about an hour discussion on this variance matter, zoning matter, as we're leaving, he goes, he kind of looks around City Hall, says, "So, have you met with other council members?" And I said, "Yes, sir, I have." He said, "So, what'd they tell you?" I said, "I can't tell you." "Oh, come on, yes you can, Tony." "Everybody else does." I go, "I'm not telling you." So, there's more observance in the breach, I guess, on that, but it's, you still can't do that. So, I'm always careful about that. Chris is careful, always careful about that. And we always ask the community to be careful about that also. If somebody in the community comes up to you and says, "Ed, I was talking to Bill Guy about this accessory." And Bill said, "No, don't tell me what Bill said. Tell me your personal thing." If you said you talked to Bill, fine, don't tell me what Bill said. Depending upon the nature of the delegation, may or may not avoid the sunshine law. And again, that gets into details of what kind of delegation is provided. What types of meetings are covered? Meetings of other boards when you're a visitor, no. Unless there are two or more officials and there's interaction, it should be noticed. But we also recommend against interaction. Meetings of other boards when you are a member, no, again, unless there are two or more officials and there's interaction, and it should be noticed. Community forums, we've had this discussion before also. It's not covered by the sunshine law unless there are two or more officials and there's interaction among them. A lot of times you go to political events, and you might, town hall meetings, like on school or something else, it might be all five board members there. As long as you don't interact with each other, then that's okay. Those are community forums. What types of activities are prohibited in meetings? Emails, text messages, other written communications, Skype, Twitter, to, from, and among board members. This can't be done, they constitute meetings under the sunshine law. And they're also public records. Fact-finding trips by the governing board can't be done, constitutes improper meetings under the sunshine. Committees, yes, board, no. Private discussions concerning district matters during recess can't take place. And there's some examples we'll get to a little bit later on. Inaudible discussions between board members that public can't hear can't take place. And we'll get into that. The Sebastian City Council on the east coast of Florida recently got into a pickle about that, and something even more egregious. There is an opportunity for a closed-door session. We've had them before. Chained meetings, attorney privilege, certain client communications or meetings. You can discuss settlement discussions or strategy sessions related to litigation expanded. And the courts have said, since this is an exemption, the public records law is going to be strictly construed. So, in, in that instance, you have to follow the notice procedure, it has to be asked for by an attorney. The only people that can be present are the counsel for the entity, the entity's board members, the chief administrator official in this case would be Chris, and the court report. Otherwise, what happens is a transcript is made verbatim of that meeting. It's then delivered to Chris's manager, custodian, kept sealed until the litigation is over. And it only applies to pending litigation, we'll get into that in a minute. It doesn't apply to claims of litigation. It doesn't apply to mediation. It applies generally. It applies to only when there's pending litigation. What other meetings are covered? Must be open workshops, as we've discussed, investigative meetings, yes, generally. Attorney board meetings generally, but again, the exception is a closed-door meeting for pending litigation. The closed-door meeting, these are some of the requirements of it. I won't go into all the detail, I briefly covered it. The entity's attorney has to call it. It has to be confined to settlement negotiations or strategy sessions. And then once the litigation is over, that closed-door verbatim transcript becomes open to the public. A lot of public officials are embarrassed because they think, "Hey, this is a free-form meeting, and I can talk about anything and everything about this litigation", not recalling, not being reminded that anything they say is verbatim transcribed, is filed with the records of the entity, and after litigation is over, anybody can ask for it. So, you get into, you can sometimes see some interesting items discussed. We're going to go through that, again, who can attend, and what happens. Again, this is just a notice of procedure, a little cartoon, notice of agenda, we talked about that. Having items in advance on in the agenda. The Florida Attorney General and Courts have said, generally, if you have an agenda, you can still add items to the agenda, but you need to be careful as to having a continual practice of adding substantive items routinely, a lot of them, so that the public doesn't have adequate notice of it. So, the best practice is, as was discussed during the workshop, have at the end of each meeting, the discussion about agenda items for next meeting. And try to avoid having walk-on items of a substantial nature. Things come up, though, we all know that, emergency items. But that's what they say, to try to avoid. But the key, again, is having a notice of agenda. This is just a little reminder. It says, "All those in favor of what we discussed in our email thread, let Larry Sun's birthday party say aye." And they all say aye. And then people in the public said, "I had no idea what's going on, and I thought the meeting was open." So, it's, it's important about the notice procedure, notice of agenda. Under the sunshine law, those reasonable notices required. When we come to CDDs, specific notice is required. And that's what we publish annually, the notice of the meetings of the board once a year. And as to the agenda, it's generally not required by the sunshine law, but CDDs are required to have an agenda available on the district website at least seven days in advance. Again, that's the unique feature for CDDs. Facilities that discriminate or reasonably restricted access are prohibited. Talked about, it has to be a public meeting, had discussions before. If we're going to have a large overflow crowd, we would move it to a larger location because to not move it to a larger location would mean it's not really a public meeting. And again, another feature for CDDs, the, the, the meeting has to be held in a public meeting when available within the district. If not, in a county courthouse, or a county in which the district's located, or a building in the county accessible to the public. We've gone through this before too. Except for all those COVID-19 issues, what if I cannot attend the meeting? We've gone through, you can appear telephonically, the other board members have established a forum physically, and if the other board members find exceptional circumstances, and it's up to the board to make that decision, then you can appear and fully participate. The minutes must be promptly recorded. Again, it can be verbatim or summary, and open public inspection. Failure to comply with the sunshine law. If it gets serious, there's criminal penalties, it's a misdemeanor, you can go to jail, pay a fine. Removal from office by the governor. There are non-criminal infractions where you still get charged, you still get called in the court, and you pay a fine. And civil actions for injunctive or declaratory relief. One other aspect of it is, failure to comply with the sunshine law renders the action void from the beginning. Void of initial. And there's cases out there where major contracts were awarded violating the sunshine law by governmental body, and it was determined that a sunshine law violation occurred, and the court said, "Hard decision, hard choice, contract's invalid." Now, you can try to remediate a sunshine law violation by having a subsequent action to have a full, robust discussion about that item in a public setting, not just rubber stamping it. But again, generally, it renders the action void from the beginning. You can try to remedy it by having an action to ratify it, but not just a perfunctory ratification, a full-blown discussion. Also, just some examples of where the media likes to put public officials and you don't like to be. The front page of the newspaper where there's an article, this is October 7th of this year in the news press, the mayor of Cape Coral, he was charged with a civil infraction violating the sunshine law. And so, they love to take photos of public officials at the lectern in front of the court. And that's the mayor behind his attorney with the mascot. And, oh, the governmental bodies cannot pay for your attorney's fees. You have to pay your own. And in that particular case, the mayor of Cape Coral was accused, and apparently enough evidence gathered that he talked to two other council members. One, he said, "Listen, you know, I'll support Remick, and you, Mayor Pro Tem, if you do something." Or I'll get, and another one, there was a position open in the city, and there's a discussion, help another council member. So, that's, papers love to do this. So, we don't want to have you on the front page of different cutting ceremonies. And such items. These are some examples. Yes, sir.
Just in the interest of time, how much, how much more do you?
One more minute.
Okay, great, thank you.
These are just some examples of cases around the state of Florida. When you get the hard copy, you can go to the website. The city of Sebastian, real quick, three council members locked City Hall, took a vote to fire the city manager, took a vote to fire the city attorney, and they've all been charged criminally with sunshine law violations and with perjury. Couple of them with perjury. Other than that, just a minor detail. So, again, these are what can happen by Florida to apply. These are some other resources. And this is, Sunshine Week is to try to shine a light on shady government, which does not like sunshine. And if you have any questions, if not, and I will make this available to all the board members and
Right, thank you, Tony. Thank, so Chris.
Thank you.
Chris, before I close out the workshop, was there anything, anything that you had that you wanted to cover?
I know there were a few comments on the workshop, but we have it at the end of the agenda, and that's really just housekeeping as far as location, time. And I had a couple of comments on content.
A couple of comments on?
Yeah, I can say that until at the end of the action agenda, we have the item for the workshop, that in setting time, place, what, what the board preference would be. I need them to break in off-site, onsite, do you want to go to Pelican for a first time?
Yes. Would you like to close the workshop and go back into the organizational portion, public here?
Yep, so I will, I will close the, the workshop and open up the, the regular meeting. And just for the record, I'll just confirm the attendees. Myself, Doug Banks, Bill Guy, Ed Tinkle, Bob Geppert, Bobby Walsh. And then our attorney, Tony Pierce, and Chris Schumaker is, is here, still with us.
Yeah, they shut them.
I'll take, I'll take the slide.
Just shut it down.
I can take the phone right now.
So, Chris, do you want to tie off that, the board advance now with the, with those items that you have before we go to public comment?
Sure, we, we could do that. And basically, what I was looking for was a favorable time, you know, a date and time of day. And, you know, we could do something, I assume, that takes two or three hours, but, you know, in the morning up to lunchtime, or if you wanted to have it closer to the end of the day, where people who work could attend. Your idea with the presidency meeting with the HOAs, we could certainly invite the HOAs to this meeting, bring them into it, and also a location, you know. Pelican could be an idea to have it over there. You know, we'll need a little larger area. We could probably get a couple of meeting rooms at the Holiday Inn at the Forum, something that would be close, but offsites where just a little different setting than the usual to come up with these ideas and discuss them. So, I don't know if any board members had any preference for time or location.
Yeah, I like having those, I like having the meetings start in the morning and, and kind of tie off right around lunch. And we can probably, I, I'd like the idea of having it at Pelican. If Bill and Bob, if, if you think there's, there's somewhere for us to be able to set up, and be able to have enough room, and we might even be able to get, you know, just a, you know, some small, maybe just get some things catered, have just some, some snacks, you know, maybe like a breakfast, you know, bagels or something along those lines.
Will their country club allow it? Our country club's got problems with that with COVID.
Oh, well, we may be able to, you know, use their auditorium, or you can have seating, or we could move to the church where there's room to sit, you know.
I said to keep it in Gateway instead of going to out, also that does discourage people from going.
Is everyone okay with looking at Pelican first as the primary option?
I don't think about Pelican. I just, going to the Forum or going someplace out of the district is just to boost the residents because they think, "What are you trying to hide?"
Yeah, I agree. So, is everyone okay with Pelican?
Pelican's town center is closed. Okay, well, end of December. And do you want to do it the first part of December, or wait till the first, first part of January to hold this?
I mean, I, I would be
December, so we could easily have it as the second meeting, before Christmas, second, third week.
Plan on one, one board meeting, so you whip out that second, third week, open it in December if you'd like to have it.
Yeah, I like to, for the new year, having this long, this is good. And you're going to have Joe DeServo, he's going to first look at what his availability is.
Okay, I'll, I'll get some dates and times out to the board members the first part of next week. And from a staff perspective, I would like to open it before we got into the board priorities, is let each of the managers get up and give a realistic assessment of the budget, what we can and can't accomplish this year in capital and maintenance with the budget that was approved. And also provide the board with a list of staff priorities. Because our, our guiding light is preserved property values, and that's the way we look at things. And I'd just like the board to hear from our side, A, the budget constraints, and also from, again, the staff, the areas that we think are most important, just as a short presentation of letting up the board move into their priority setting and goal setting.
Yeah, Chris, I think that would be a good idea. Okay, thanks. So, Chris, you'll just come back to us on potential locations and, and dates, and whether or not DeServo would be available or not. And if he's not available in December, I think we can just make the decision on whether we want to proceed and find another facilitator, if we want to just, you know, nominate, you know, someone within the board or someone else to, to facilitate. So, I do agree that I like to have it in December prior to us kicking off in January.
Yeah, I have a question about DeServo's role, because I wasn't really familiar with what he did last time. Are you just looking for Are you just looking for a meeting facilitator type of a person? Or does he have to be a subject matter expert? And the only reason I'm asking is there is a retired facilitator within Pelican that may or may not be interested in helping us. That is, if Joe's not available, that might be another resource. If he doesn't have to be an expert on anything other than facilitating meetings.
Well, yeah, I think what, what Joe brings to the table is just historical knowledge of, of where we've, where we've come from and where we're at today. So his role would be partial facilitator and partial subject matter expert and kind of consultant. If he's not available, then we could shift gears and just look for someone to just help facilitate and push the meeting forward. But I would, you know, of course, look for that confirmation from the rest of the supermatters.
I don't even know the gentleman's name, but I participated in a meeting that he conducted for Residents Alliance. And he just knew how to make the meeting go. If it's needed, if Joe's not available, then I'll find out who it is. Otherwise, I won't bother.
Okay.
Bob, who are you thinking of there?
I don't know the guy's name, but he did something for the Residents Alliance a year ago. He did a great job.
And he's moved out of the community?
No, no, he's still at Pelican. He was somebody with the Residents Alliance, I just don't know who it was. I just don't recall his name.
Okay. Break.
All right.
So information together, date, location, agenda, time, and circulate to the board members.
So Joe's going to set the date, which is fine with me in December, if he's available.
We want to see what Joe's dates are, get several, his schedules are.
The 10th to 17th and.
Yeah.
And would you like to do it on a board day or your Thursday, but just in the AM? And like Mr. Banks said, we could have coffee and juice and pastries and things like that.
These are my good days. Your mother's lobster. Yeah. Yeah, it's just seeing what this sort of deal is, if he's even interested at all.
I'll get it, get that circulated Monday.
Okay, just, just to recap, and so Joe first, and then the gentleman at Pelican. And then you mentioned in the beginning that you could look for someone that is an expert on the area.
Sure, just a professional facilitator, something with the Florida Association of Second District, so. That's all.
Okay, okay, thanks, Chris. So let's, let's transition to the, the election of officers. Tony, you go with that. Is there anything we need to do to open that up?
Those are, we're back into the regular meeting, so that's appropriate item to take up.
Okay, so let's open up the nominations for chairman.
I would nominate Doug Banks for chairman.
We have a nomination in a second.
I'll second that.
We have a nomination in a second, any discussions? Okay, well, I will call for the vote. Mr. Gepper?
Aye.
Flavia?
Aye.
Mr. Tinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Guy? Your mic is off. And that is a nomination for Mr. Banks' chair.
Hey, Bill, you're on mute. They call a question. Hey, Bill, can you hear us? You're on mute. You don't need to just take yourself off mute.
And that's, that's on, you're in Mr. Guy.
All the way.
Okay, Mr. Guy? Can you hear us? Beginning here, so I'm muted from that end.
Hey, Bill, can you hear us? If you can, can you give us the thumbs up or just acknowledge that you can hear us? No, okay.
These votes, no, okay, well, the motion passes three to one.
All, okay, okay, Mr. Banks, please.
Mr. Banks votes also, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Banks, would you like to vote for yourself?
Aye.
Okay, well, then the motion passes four to one for Mr. Banks as the new chairman.
Just as, sorry. The only time you can abstain from voting is when there's a conflict of interest on the Florida law, otherwise you have to vote on all matters.
I'm sorry, I thought a conflict was voting for yourself.
No. It doesn't necessarily, in your, to your special benefit or gain, it's not personal, it's business.
Well, next nomination for vice chair.
I would like to nominate Bill Guy for vice chair.
I'll second that one.
Okay, we have a nomination in a second for Mr. Guy as vice chairman. Any discussion? I will call the vote. Mr. Gepper?
Aye.
Ms. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Tinkle?
Yep.
Mr. Banks?
Aye.
Mr. Guy, would you like to vote for yourself as vice chair? Thumbs up or thumbs down? We still can't hear you. He votes for himself. So Mr. Guy is vice chair, and that match motion passes four to one.
I think definitely what's next, Chris, that motion to appoint a secretary and treasurer, and then all other board members are appointed as assistant secretaries. That'd be Mr. Gepper, Ms. Walsh, and Mr. Tinkle would be all appointed as assistant secretaries, and he got motion to do it now.
Okay, and you, you were looking, we, of course, Stephen Blum is typically a treasurer, so we're looking at a motion for a secretary and all other board members that aren't officers are assistant secretaries.
Yes, typically, I think Chris, you're the secretary, typically the district managers, etc.
Okay. And the, and the other board members are all assistant secretaries, so we need a motion.
Yes, once again, with the board getting appointed, one of the board members secretary, and then have Chris as an assistant secretary. And you have a lot of discretion.
Okay.
I recommend that Mr. Schumacher be the secretary.
Okay.
And, and all the board members be assistants. The other board members are assistant secretaries. Can we throw Stephen Blum in there too as treasurer? Yes.
I have any motion?
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? Okay, and the motion is to appoint the district manager as the secretary, and the other board members who are not chair and vice chair are all appointed as assistant secretaries. And Mr. Stephen Blum is appointed the treasurer. And board members are assistant treasurers, Tony, or one board member?
Yeah, I guess just one board member.
Okay. Well, let's go with the secretary vote first, which is district manager, secretary, and other board members that are not officers as assistant secretaries. We have a motion and a second call the vote. Mr. Gepper?
Aye.
Mrs. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Tinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Banks?
Aye.
Mr. Guy? Still can't hear you, and up and down on the vote, which is just secretary as district manager and the other board members assistant secretaries. Mr. Guy shows a thumbs up. So that's made. So assistant treasurer, and get a motion, please, for an assistant treasurer. And that involves a lot of document signing, if anyone wants something to look for.
Actually, there for somebody in here for Mark or somebody, you know. Yeah, that might be.
I think that probably is very appropriate. Okay, so can we get a motion, Mr. Gepper? Motion to appoint Laura Leroy, our business manager, as assistant treasurer?
Yes.
A second.
I'll second one.
Okay, we have a motion, the second, to appoint Laura Leroy, our business manager, as assistant treasurer. Any discussion? No, call the vote. Mr. Gepper?
Aye.
Mrs. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Tinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Banks?
Aye.
And Mr. Guy, and it's a trade assistant treasurer. No, yes?
I think it was not.
Aye, okay.
Aye, yes.
Okay, and that, we're back online now, we just heard that, okay. Okay, well, those appointments are made. And that'll be resolution 2021-03.
Great, thanks, Chris.
So we. Charge, Mr. Banks?
Yep, thank you. So let's move to a public, public comment.
Do we have any members of the audience that wanted to make a public comment today? I am showing none, and I am showing no chat requests online.
Okay, and we can move to action items, 3A.
And 3A is approval of loan application enabling resolution for the FDEP SRF program. And this item came up the last meeting and the month before. And this is for three utility-related projects with a total amount of $277,000 for design and permitting of those three projects. And this application and the enabling resolution is just that, to submit the application to the FDEP. And that agreement will come back to the board in February to actually execute. So this, this action is for the application only, and that funding has been approved by the FDEP as a result of the facilities plan.
Motion to approve and like have discussion.
Okay, we've got a motion, we got a second.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Mr. Tinkle?
Yeah, a couple of questions under that next less paragraph before the realization. Loan regaining the term period for five years will require a time-consuming and costly bond validation. Two questions, how long, how costly? Well, I thought that after we went through this the first time, that this is pretty much a, still under the line from here on.
Well, we. No, it's, it's less time-consuming, it's less expensive in the process. But now, especially with courts, we're doing everything remotely, everybody's Zoom here. And so makes it a little more challenging. They were backed up for a while because of COVID. The notice process might be a lot easier, as far as we don't have to send notices out to all the individuals that we did last time of the assessments. It was predicated on assessment increase. But again, it, it's, I can't tell you what that number would be, but it's going to be less expensive, less time-consuming possibly, but it's still going to cost more than if we didn't have to have the time though.
And it doesn't make it ever sort of, excuse me, whether we go SRF or we go to the bank, if the term is greater than five years, we have a validation.
That's correct. And what, the way we did the validation for the Lake Bank program was we could have any borrower, if they're within five years. We didn't want to limit it just SRF. We didn't know if SRF would always be there. And that's unfortunate, but it's still got, it still costs money unless it wouldn't be there. One other note, too, the revenues pledged for this one, it's in section three, will be a portion of the district's utility rate, fees and charges. Because recall, we have an outstanding loan out there, I think, in Korea.
Yes.
So we have some already pledged, so that's what I think what DEP wants to see, which is the source of revenue.
Correct, and also, Mr. Tinkle, we will have our rate consultants coming on January 21st to that meeting to explain what the impact would be to the utility rates for the principal and interest to.
Who's doing that analysis? I was hoping that Stephen was doing that relative to a cost comparison of the SRF loan versus.
We can have Stephen look at it, but I asked the consultants, because they do a lot of work with commercial paper to do.
I'm sure we have that.
To do a comparison, and also with that commercial paper, because you're looking at not like the Lake Bank, a multimillion-dollar project, when you're looking at 277,000, it may be cheaper to go the commercial route for less than five-year finance for that amount. But we will present all of those facts to the board in January, so they can make their decision with, on that agreement in February.
You want, just one question, Chris, at some point in time. I know we have this cost, if you go more than five years for the ultimate construction. Does FDEP, I can't recall, does they allow reimbursement of the cost of the bond validation to be reimbursed?
No, attorney's fees, attorney's fees and finance-related costs are not reimbursed.
I didn't, I was trying to make sure.
It's all right.
So we had a motion in a second, is there any other discussions?
Now we can call the vote.
Yeah, call the vote. Mr. Gepper?
Aye.
Mrs. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Tinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Banks?
Aye.
Mr. Guy?
Yes.
Okay, five, though, the motion passes and approves the middle of the application enabling resolution to submit that application to the DEP.
Okay, great, thanks, Chris. Let's move on to 3B.
And that is approval of the surface water maintenance and aeration maintenance contracts. And Brian Beshear, Public Works Manager, will present that information to you.
Oh, good afternoon, Brian Beshear, Public Works Manager. The aquatic maintenance recommendations, request for proposal, this was published on August 31st. We received the following sealed bids, and we're open on October 12th of this year. Area maintenance, we had Solitude Lake Management, Clark Environmental, Aquagenics. Surface water management maintenance, we had Solitude, Clark, Aquagenics and Aquatic Weed Control. Our conservation area, we had Solitude, Aquagenics and Aquatic Weed Control as well. The bid tally sheets reflect the amounts each vendor sent in. The staff, Al couldn't be here, but we looked it over closely. We would like to pretty much award the aeration maintenance and service water maintenance contracts to Aquagenics. As their lowest qualified bidder, as far as a conservation area. Aquatic weed control, like $128 difference between them and Aquagenics, but they've been doing it, they're familiar with it. And we recommend them, as far as from staff, who basically is the same people we're using as of today. I brought a couple of gentlemen here from Aquagenics, George and Richard. You'd like to ask them questions concerning, they're pretty much maintaining it now.
Can I get a question, Brian? Your recommendation is to the award of these contracts and bids, in each instance, are the lowest, most responsive, responsible, thus their proposal most advantageous to the district?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Brian, in, in regards to aquatic weed control, so that's the, that's the vendor we currently are using today? That's, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and from a staff's perspective, they have been performing at or above the expectations that we have in accordance to the contract and our, you know, what we need?
Yes, they have that. They were about 100-something dollars higher than Aquagenics. But they've been pretty, according to staff, like I say, very compliant with the Southwest Water Modernization District Report in 2020, and they're very familiar with the property, they've been doing a pretty good job for us.
Is there, is there, is there any benefit to having, let's say, one, one vendor manage all these areas? And is the, the conservation area maintenance the kind of scope of work, is it something that would, it would be easily transferable to a new vendor? Or because of the complexity, it is more advantageous?
Aquagenics used to have that as well, so they could take it over. They just have to get ready for later with it. I mean, you can go either way. You could have one vendor do it all and put all your eggs in one basket. That can be done.
That's it for me. Supervisors, any additional comments for discussion?
There were young people that bid Woods and Robbins to open a bid.
We, basically, this is all the ones that we received. But for that, we had, like I say, Solitude, Clark, Aquagenics and Aquatic Weed Control. As the only one four come back, and actually, one of them, we had to toss out because they put in the wrong dollar amount. They did it by, say yearly, they put in quarterly amount, I couldn't accept that for the area. The areas that went Aquagenics, they were the cheapest. Aquagenics for the, basically, the surface water. The only difference was Aquatic Weed Control was, like I say, 100-something dollars more per year than Aquagenics. And that was on the conservation area.
I'm just curious, why were bidding in quarterly? You're still going to say nine, right? Why would that exclude them?
Because if you don't follow directions, you get tossed out. I hate to say it. They put in per quarterly cost, not annual cost, or annual cost would have been higher anyway.
Well, I, I saw that, but I didn't know why that would exclude somebody.
But that is what the staff, we recommend Aquagenics and Aquatic Weed Control to continue what we have.
Question, what's the 2019 surface water management annual bid compared to the 206, 147 that we have right now? What's the dollar, dollar differentiation?
I'd have to go back and pull it up. We basically allocated, we had enough money to cover all this, we have to move some funds around, so really, did go as far above as what we thought.
I mean, that's, that's where I was headed, where are all of these relative to our 2019?
Far as from, we had aerators, came in 14, three, we'd allocated to 20, so actually, we were under that. Conservation area we awarded was 102,000, 102,208. Lake maintenance, we had 300,000, conservation area, we're at 65,000, so we have to move 35,000 over to cover that.
So Lake ma, the conservation area is over our budget by 35,000?
Yes, sir.
And water management on maintenance is under our budget by 94,000?
Yes, so basically, we're just moving money around to cover it from different accounts.
Okay, and the air, the aerators were, again?
We have to move 37,000 from Lake Main to Conservation Area to cover that.
And the aerators were at our budget?
Actually came in under. So.
Do we have the aeration before?
Yes.
Who was doing it before?
Same folks are doing that.
Okay.
So basically, it was like, we just stayed the same vendors, we had money set aside for this year, not knowing what would happen, and it did come in, some of them a little bit higher, but we didn't have enough funds to cover, everything we needed, just moving funds around. Like I say, we gotta move almost 38,000 from Lake Main to Conservation Area to cover that.
But in the, in the, in the staff recommendations, I didn't understand, staff recommends continuing with aquatic weed control due to the familiarity with all sites and a complacency report from Southwest Water Management District, what's, what's that mean?
You have to repile a report, basically with Southwest Water Management on all your different type of weeds and everything else that grows out there, that we have to say, we, exotic weeds, we have to do a report of that once a year, you have to be in compliance to that, especially, I know down, Al's very familiar with, but you get down around some of these areas, you get different plants or non-exotic getting into there.
That's what I was getting to, was the complacency on our actions or complacency was on the form of our report?
We were very good compliant with the report, which was good for us, the Southwest Water Barn, and I pointed out a few things, but we were very compliant, and we were happy with it.
Yeah, Southwest Water actually comes out and walks.
We, we walk it, trust me, you better do it in dry season. It's, it's fun, but.
You're rid of the Malalukat tree.
If you wish to ask any questions, like I say, I have a couple of gentlemen here, George and Richard from aquagenics.
Hey, Brian, one quick question, so, and I'm not sure if you would know this, or Chris, but aquagenics used to, used to have the, the conservation area?
Yes, they did.
Okay, and do we, anyone remember why we went away from them and with aquatic weed control this last, last time?
I would have to ask Chris, that was three years ago, I wasn't here, maybe Chris might know. We switched over three years ago, from aquagenics to aquatic weed control, you know why? I was just a vendor for conservation area.
I think it was the bidding. Yeah, it was just the bidding and trying a new vendor.
Okay, but was there any delinquency or, or any issues with aquagenics at that time? Was it just a, a lower bid, do you, do you recall?
No, it was just a lower bid, and I think it was one of those, they, they had one contract, and we'd had another vendor with another one, I think it was pure money. And there wasn't a big difference in the money at that time either.
I would just ask the other board supervisors, if they feel like it is more advantageous for us to, to have one, one vendor managing these areas, if that's, you know, more advantageous, or if they're okay with splitting these up between aquagenics and keeping the, the existing vendor in place? Any, any comments or?
It was roughly $128 a year difference.
$100.
So cost is minimal.
Over the three-year period, you're talking nine, 500 bucks.
To your point, Doug, I, I would see the benefit of consolidating it for $100 a year, just to see that one.
One, one contract for all three.
Yeah. Then you got one guy you called for, one stop shop.
Yeah.
I need to go first, make motion to award all three contracts to aquagenics.
I'll second.
Your motion in a second, discussion?
Anybody wish to talk aquagenics, like I said, George is in the crowd along with Richard.
I'm well familiar with it, sir.
Okay.
I pay for dealing.
You're very aware of it. That's all the staff have, like I said.
Okay, so we have. Yeah, we've got a second, we've got, we've got a motion, a second, Chris, can you call the vote?
Okay, Mr. Gepper? Yes, Ms. Walsh?
Yeah.
Mr. Tinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. Guy?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one, aquagenics with all three contracts.
Thank you.
Okay, Chris, we can move on to, to the next item, is Kenny presenting?
Yes. We'll go from aquatics to manholes.
Good afternoon, Kenny Hall, Utility Manager, this is a, last year, just to give you a background, this, last year in a community sweep of Daniels Preserve, we found 13 manholes, six of which were very, very immediate, needing attention, seven more where we could pull off, but needed to get to as soon as possible. We budgeted for this in the 400, the enterprise fund, for $25,000 to complete this. This one, I'm going to their Daniels Preserve HOA meeting, I believe, November 30th, to go over, this is gonna be a nighttime job, the positions of these manholes are in front of the gate, right smack dab in the middle of their main intersection coming into their community, and then one on Commerce, which is going to necessitate a nighttime operation to do these final manhole. This is for $25,000, finish this.
They did them all for 25?
Yes, sir.
Question?
Yes, sir.
These are to repair current reinforced concrete manholes?
Yes, sir.
Did, what, what's the, the cost to replace the manhole totally instead of doing?
To completely remove the manhole and put a new one in?
Yeah.
That price is low. But this is the lowest bidder.
I'm just saying that the cost of the new manhole, I don't, these don't show what the depths are on the manhole.
10 foot?
Is that what that?
12 foot five.
That's what those are.
That would be, that would be, say like 13 foot.
Not much more than that.
13 if you put it in, 14 foot.
Huge, nice question, whether or not we would have that as an option.
What's the normal light of a manhole?
We would yet to have to replace any of them, and you do have anomalies, but what we determined with this one is the original lining, I mean, when they did the community, I believe in 2003, it was defected, gotten there, it's completely ruined.
50 to 75 years loss.
That's what I was thinking, I mean, if there are any kind of recourse, we could go and ask the installer?
And we, we had another manhole.
You get H2S, gas and these things, and.
The liner, the liner was, was what seemed to be, that failed, the liner had just completely been, the hydrogen sulfide had completely corroded out. And then you go to two manholes away, and it's in near pristine condition.
Okay.
Motion in a second. Call the vote.
Aye.
Mr. Gepper. Mrs. Walsh.
Aye.
Mr. Tinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Banks.
Aye.
And Mr. Guy. Lost his picture and his mic, Mr. Guy, are you still there? Well, we'll move on a, on a four, and an absent vote to spend the $24,993.60 for the manhole rehabilitation at Daniels Preserve.
Right. And so, Chris, can you, I think we've already discussed D?
Yes, sir, but one, one question on that. In the, there was pages 23 and 24, that I didn't know if those were a part of D, or if that was just super close information to help our day along, but what the hell are we talking about, it's a meeting that was held on October 23rd, I was never notified of the board meeting on October 23rd.
There was a meeting, the question was whether or not there should be an emergency meeting called, I can't recall, it's probably called off hand, I wasn't even called it, there was an emergency meeting. Yeah. What, what was the emergency, I can't recall what issue was, Chris, can you?
I, it had something, I think, to do maybe with the budget, I can't remember either, we talked about how they get together.
Mess up with the county on the taxes?
No.
No.
We just found that out.
Yeah, that's, that's very recent.
I, I just wondered this, because the, the input was that board members were contacted, and I thought.
No, it was.
I don't remember it.
Was it the roundabout, Chris? No. I don't understand, Pete, I can't recall what it was.
Well, we had, well, there was no meeting, it didn't, it didn't exist?
Correct. We talked about, about having to call an emergency meeting, and it really wasn't an emergency.
Well, at, at one time, there was a discussion about the need that the county wanted, I believe, a position.
Close the road.
CBD on whatever.
That's it, closing.
Closing the road for a year, I'm sorry, for six months, as opposed to doing a, a, a partial.
Right.
And I thought you had polled all, or going to poll all the board members, what their position was, I know, I indicated what mine was, but they saw. And my question is, what happened?
What the result was, is they were still working with a contractor to get the bid, and it wasn't attractive enough financially to reduce that, where they were like, so they.
So they're gonna leave it one lane open?
One lane open, that'll start in two weeks, their maintenance of traffic, and you will have a straight ahead and right turn only.
I hope somebody goes down to Snowy Brook at 82 and puts a sign down there that there is a long queue ahead.
Well, there was, when they were doing.
I was in a mess the other day, on the first day of this, I missed this flight.
Hey, you know, and that's, that's a really good idea, I wonder if we could maybe get DOT to put something at that entrance that says like, slow through traffic, or, you know, construction underway, through traffic delays, or something along those lines?
Yeah, I'd like to see.
Yeah, for the next year.
See a deferred traffic, this road is going to be subject to long delays for the next year, if you live.
You know, they had those, the DOT's got those.
Gateway, you might want to consider going another route.
Yeah, we, we, we talked to them out there the other day, and they, they will have lit billboard signs with messages.
Yeah, they need it all the way down, so that all these cut-throughs, because these cut-throughs are unbelievable every day, and all they're doing is trying to shorten the amount of time it takes to get to Daniels, and they come flying down Gateway Boulevard every single day.
So then I'll suggest they'll be on, on, you know, E2 and Brooklyn as well.
Awesome, at that, I think they, they just were gonna put them all forward, just down, you know, from the, from the, on the approach to.
So by that, you read, you're in the trap.
Oh, yeah. But you don't know why.
So at this point, type of decision has been made, they will maintain traffic.
Correct. And the, the project schedule is 360 days. And again, in two weeks, they'll start that maintenance of traffic, and at the end of that, two weeks, they'll probably start the deflection of the force main work.
I would suggest that we're not giving polling except to find out available meeting dates. That's, that's not allowed.
That's all for this side.
Okay, Chris, so we can move to consent agenda for, do we do these separately? This story?
Consent agenda is done in March, March 9th is full.
Yeah, is there anything to pull in consent agenda A or B?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Come in.
We have a motion. Good, Chris.
Yes, sir, I'll call the vote, motion in a second. Mr. Gepper?
Yes.
Mrs. Walsh? Mr. Tinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Banks?
Aye.
Mr. Guy?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes five to zero.
So great, so that, that wraps up the, the action items for today's meeting. Chris, is there anything else before I move to supervisor comments?
Well, we, we did have a hiccup, and I sent information to the board members and also to the HOAs that were distributed on our Facebook page and on our website, that there was an error in the assessment, due to an error in the file that was sent over to the tax collector. The good part is that basically, reduced everyone's assessment in the residential side by 33 to $85. The people, the 1100 that had already paid their taxes will be getting a refund check issued. Revised assessment tax bills will be going out this week, and the people that get the revised notice will have an additional month to take advantage of that November discount.
Need a month?
Yes.
And also, also the good news is, according to Stephen Blum, in that conversation, now we had, confirmed that the lean assessment book, which is the official book constituting its prima facie evidence of validity of the role, had the proper assessment role, and that's, that was critical, and that was key. Chris and I had this conversation, we had the conversation with Stephen to, that better communications in the future to the district manager and district council, so we can have conversations ahead of time, so the board can also be appraised ahead of time.
So that, that, those two attachments to the motion that we made back in August, or whatever it was, the one attachment, which was the assessment role, was incorrect at that time.
No, what happened was, after the board adopted its budget, there were needed to be some adjustments to the budget number, which resulted in adjustments to the final assessments that were levied, and we all understood that the revised assessment role, reflecting the downward budget, had been the correct exhibit C. But that's the resolution, but it was not that it was properly recorded in the district's assessment input, I look at it as clerical issue.
That's my point.
So we're just bringing a proper exhibit C, and I think Laura has that now.
That, that's what, one, the exhibit C, those exhibit C, that we had approved, was in fact, one that was not calculated based upon the changes that we had made on the budget.
Correct, and what, what basically happened is there was some changes to the Pelican budget, they made the amount of $100,000, and the board made additional cuts to their budget, and that's what didn't come through on the role that was sent to the tax collector. So the budget figure that was adopted was correct, so there's no impact to our budget, it's just that the people did not see in their tax bill the reduction in the assessment by those cuts that were made by the board.
So if we went to the document that you forwarded to all of us, that is the corrected version by, by, by plat or by?
One of us ordered this week.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, by the, by the strap number, and also, those notices started going out already from the tax collector, so some people are already starting to perceive them.
Yeah, and it's called the improvement name book, and that, Stephen Blum said that was correct. One other interesting aspect of it, I don't think the board was, I'm hard with it, but Infomart had to, properly, file one, form correction form for each property. So there were 6,000 separate documents that had to be submitted to the property creator using the approved appropriate room, and they did that, so.
I want to check mine, it was $75 less, so that was 10%, I was happy. Early Christmas.
You saw the cuts that the board made, that's what it reflects. But that's all I have.
Okay, Chris, great, so we'll go into supervisor comments, Bill, we'll start with you.
Oh, I have nothing.
Mr. Tinkle?
Yeah, I've got, with the project we've got going on in Gateway, on the Comcast, and the fact that our utility staff is spending an inordinate amount of time over there chasing breaks and cuts and all that, a Achilles heel has arisen, and that is, is that we've got a, a device that would help us, but if we have our main, main. But if we have our main, major maintenance truck in the shop, there's no way to pull the device. We need a new utility truck, uh, not one with a crane lift and all that, but one, we need one that is able to pull the equipment that we need to pull around and have access. To various types of construction like the one we had where we, as San Diego Sewers get hit out of a million dollar house. They weren't very appreciative of that. So I would suggest that any way we can, uh, we get a utility purchase or a utility truck. They use the term, uh, terminology of thirty-five hundred. Or three fifty. But, but, but not, but not one with a, a lift, one that could pull our equipment.
Right, and, and we were actually going to bring that to the board advance for discussion, but yeah, we'll move forward with that. And, and we are a little shorthanded and also the, you have, you mentioned the time we're spending in Gateway Greens. We're also getting a little better acquainted with Pelican and this afternoon, there was an issue out there. We're lucky it wasn't a utility line, but the pavement, the street was breached.
Was that on city side or our side?
It was on our side and they originally called in because they thought it was a utility line that broke because there was water bubbling up from under the pavement, but it was the drilling fluid. They got their bit stuck and pulling it back, it just filled up the hole with water and burst the pavement. And we dug it up to find out to make sure it wasn't a line. We had shut off our lines and luckily we didn't impact any customers because of the looping and it bowed off. But the sub base of the road is damaged and the paving is damaged and.
On hot wire side?
Yes, sir. And hot wire has Ajax paving, they were supposed to be out there and start repairs tomorrow, but that intersection's blocked off.
The other one I've got is, uh, only because it's gotten very close and personal, uh, Gateway Greens is in the process of trying to develop a golf cart policy. And I'm learning more about golf carts than I thought I would learn. And it brought something to my mind. This came up in Pelican Preserve. And there is an issue with golf carts that I was not aware of. There are golf carts and that there are golf carts and the golf carts that go greater than twenty mile an hour are called LSVs. And they are under a different statute. And if they're on public roads, you've got a major problem. Did we address that? We did.
I don't think LSVs were around then and LSVs can go on any public streets. And I think, I'm not sure if there's a speed limit of twenty-five miles.
Twenty.
Twenty, twenty-five, I mean, I've seen them around Naples and.
The issue is we're trying to do one and our policy, we were able to essentially get around it because our roads are private. We can either enhance the statutes or we can ignore the statutes. But when I asked about a public, uh, road, I was told it's by a section. So I wondered if we get ourselves protected when we talked about this Pelican Preserve.
I'll make one comment, then we might ask Warren Davies, he's has a lot of, uh, experience for that, also Scott Sharnett. But that's one reason in Pelican that the golf carts at the club, you won't see them on the road because they aren't street legal. And it's my impression that the carts you see on the road in Pelican are.
Yeah, that's, that's the big one. I, I went through the title or the Florida statute on LSVs and it is a totally different thing than a golf cart.
I think it's got a.
Single's headlights and.
Oh, seat belts, seat belts, VIN number.
They can be operated on any, on any street and posted speed limit's thirty-five mile per hour less.
So, but they're defined and it's a vehicle that goes over twenty. Well, our golf club, we've got about twenty members that would want these twelve, fifteen thousand dollar golf carts, had them suited up. And they'll drive twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine mile per hour.
So Ed, what's the, what's the issue for us?
The, the issue is, is are we protected because we were doing something or we approved something for Pelican Preserve? I just want to make sure we were protected on what we did.
Well, we were running golf carts and the state regulates those speed vehicles that are being, because they have to, they have to be registered and typed. As opposed to a golf cart's daughter to be tried, registered titles.
That's part of it, it's insurance too.
Yeah. So I think, I think that's.
Can you take that away? See if there's any, anything we need to do or, or, you know, Bob, Bill?
We're making sure that we're safe because I, I got the attorney, our association today scared the Jesus out of me on this issue. I had one other item.
Well, before you leave the golf carts, you have a comment.
I was just going to say that the, uh, the vehicle you're talking about has to be totally streetworthy, licensed, lights, the whole nine yards. It can only go twenty-five miles an hour, but it can go on thirty-five mile an hour roadways. We addressed that a little bit in Stony Brook. And one of the big things someone said was, well, we can drive around here with those vehicles because there's no real regulation against it because the law says it's right. But they can drive twenty-five miles an hour down Gateway Boulevard because that's a thirty-five mile an hour zone. And that is like you say, scared the Jesus out of me because I can just see them people getting run over. But that's the difference between the two.
As I read and was told today, uh, you were playing with fire if you're taking your golf cart or an LSV out on Gateway Boulevard because it's illegal. The county hasn't approved it, but that's not my problem, I don't go out there.
Well, then I don't know if it, as I read the statute, the county has a ability to prohibit it. But I think absent the county prohibiting it.
They can go.
They, they can go and that same thing, same, same with municipalities.
Same with, same with a car, except we can only go on thirty-five mile an hour roadways. I think that was the used up and availability.
I, I raise it just to make sure that we are protected in Pelican.
I'll double check, because I recall a number of years ago with the golf cart program in Pelican Preserve, and I think I double checked that the city did not give any prohibition against the operations within Pelican Preserve. I can double check.
I don't know. The, the last item, this is.
Pelican Preserve's regulations, I think if you go check them, the golf carts there are able to go eighteen miles an hour. Now, some people put a little bit bigger wheels on them and get a little bit more speed, but the golf carts that they, they specify are legal and are, only go eighteen miles an hour. I know when I bought mine, the guy said, that's it. Fifteen is normally what they do, but they can get them up to eighteen and that's the end of it.
Did the state register the vehicles?
Yes.
And proof of insurance. They're getting stick.
And we, and we have a couple that are actually licensed for the road, but they don't consider golf carts, they're streetworthy.
Right.
Machines.
You don't want to get in a big four wheel job or two, what was that called? If there's something else, some other vehicle.
Well, that was a light one.
In the meantime, Tony, Tony's got to take away, so we know there's some, could be some potential discussion there. Appreciate you bringing that up. You had one more item?
Okay, the last item I had is, is that, uh, relating to the Gateway Pelican Preserve access road. I prepared for the, uh, the group that's working on that, a cost estimate. And I think our next thing is to sit down with the, the group that's working on that and try to start coming up with an allocation of how we're going to pay for this. So that we can, uh, have some type of consensus before we start spending big bucks. Because I'm looking at somewhere around four hundred and sixty thousand dollar cost estimate. Legal fees, permitting fees, construction costs, everything to do that with.
That's to convert the crushed stone to.
Yeah.
Yeah, and on that point, I had a conversation yesterday with Patrick Van Ass. He's a planner with R W Way and he has been the planner for a number of the WCI, Lennar amendments to DRI, he's very familiar with it. I, I asked him if he would be interested in thinking about, I was worked out about being retained for purposes of working through the DRI amendment. And he said, well, as long as it doesn't, uh, as long as I get rid of insurance from WCI or Lennar, so, okay, so Russell Smith has set the record. He's okay with it as long as it doesn't hurt WCI and they don't have to pay for it. But so Patrick's available to discuss in greater detail of what's this going down.
Yeah, I think the, the big issue is what's the skill or levels worth that we have to do to accomplish the DRI. Because from what I understand, the, uh, like you said, Russell doesn't have any issues with us, they don't pay anything and it's done timely.
Yeah, and I think the big issue is having a sit down with the city staff first of all and trying to get them to make sure it's not a substantial deviation, it's just a minor change. And getting their criteria. So I think that's, they're going to think they have a better path as to how you're going to go.
And hey, Ed, when you said the group that's looking at this, what, what group are you referring to?
Well, right now, the board, uh, a couple of months ago, uh, told me to represent us and Bill, I'm working with Bill Roder from Pelican Preserve.
The community association, we're telling.
Yeah, okay, uh, Tony, I have a question around this. With the creation of this access road, does that in any way cause any conflict or contradiction? To any of the language or stipulations that we have which separates Pelican from Gateway and some of their exemptions that they have today?
Someone could assert that that results in the ability of the district under that budget philosophy and rule adopted many years ago. To make a determination that the properties in Pelican Preserve can affect received benefit from the Gateway owned facilities in the incorporated section of Gateway. It's the old, we call it conveniently, I mean, it's a shorthand term for is interconnectivity. But is it determination that, uh, someone could argue that the district could go back and the board could say, listen, there's enough of a connection now that you can come through. You can access the commons, you can access the soccer fields easily without having to go all the way around. And so then you in fact, you in that community do in fact benefit. We can then assess you a proportionate share of the cost of operations, maintenance.
That's why.
And capital, that's one of the arguments someone could make.
Doug, that's, that was one of my positions and I've taken the position all along on this, that this road is an emergency utility road. It will have gates both in for, uh, evac purposes and or a limited transponder use to, uh, assigned personnel, i.e. our utility people. And that is it. And then the city came along and also said that they want a definitive statement from Pelican Preserve that this is not going to be a resident for access.
Yeah, so why don't we do, why don't we potentially, Chris, you know, maybe add this, uh, as a potential discussion item for our, our board advance or our, our offsite? Because I, you know, I don't want to open up any can of worms on this one, but I think we need to make sure that we, uh, have a collective position as a board as we go to discuss, you know, funding. But I think fundamentally, we need to make sure that we address that particular concern so we can squash it before it, you know.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Banks, uh, the board, it's my opinion what the board can do is make a determination based upon whatever the ultimate detail works out on this room. If it's limited use, the board may look at and apply the, the rule of the budget philosophy and say, there is not any benefit. That accrues to properties in Pelican Preserve from these facilities in Gateway and not have an additional assessment.
My whole point is let's just make sure we include that into the general discussion, so we don't, we don't, we can make a statement or include it. You know, the language and we don't have to, we won't have to address it any further. So that, that's all I have on that. Ed, is that it for you, buddy?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Bob?
Um, I've got two things, I want to comment on the road because, uh, the benefit to greater Gateway and Pelican is the utility vehicles using it. It will not be a resident break and I'll leave it there. Ed's present a position very well and Pelican Preserve Community Association agrees with that. The timing on this stuff is the critical portion because at the point in time in the first quarter when Lennar is done, if we don't have an amendment to the DRI, they will dig up the road and put shrubbery. So we have to get it all done, all parties agree into that sometime in the next probably sixty days or less.
At best.
At best. Uh, the only other comment is, uh. Back about eight or nine years ago, Pelican Preserve came to the board and asked that certain, uh, facilities that they had been paying for the HOA. In, uh, in Pelican would come over here financially because of the pending bankruptcy. And they were related to, uh, security landscaping and pods and conservation areas. There is discussion right now going on within Pelican, ready to come to the board, but I want you to think about it, of decoupling some of these things. Particularly at this point in time, we're talking security and our landscaping. So that may come up and I'll bring it up in the workshop meeting, uh, as, as it matures in its thinking. But the board in Pelican has now been in their role long enough that they're now thinking of this. They no longer need the protection of Gateway on those, doesn't relate to bonds or weapons at this point. Because of the, uh, the infrastructure, piping, all those kind of things that are covered by the bonds. But whatever Tony is going to think in the future, just give us some thought. Whether or not, you know, we want to do it, we don't want to do it or whatever. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Bob. And Flavi?
Just have two things, uh, first of all, I guess, uh, let's say that I'm looking forward to working with each of you, uh, the next four years. And also, uh, I'll be looking forward for staff, uh, his staff's recommendation, what the top priorities are, uh, the next workshop.
And I'll just close by, uh, saying again, I want to welcome both Flavi and Bob, uh, to the board, very excited. And I appreciate the vote of confidence, uh, in the board supervisors and, and putting me in the, in the chair position. But I think our success of the last couple of years, um, has been our ability to really work together as a board, uh, through collaboration, open discussion. And driving mutual respect, uh, in those conversations. So that's what I see with this board moving forward, uh, is to continue to drive efficiencies, uh, cost savings. And, and, and again, just to be able to collaborate collectively as a board, I think that's where our success is going to be. Regardless of who's chair or, or what, uh, I'm very excited with the board that we have now. And I hope everyone is as well, I see some really great things for us in the future, um, in driving improvements in staff. And again, I want to thank staff for everything they've done this year, uh, getting us to the point that we are today. Uh, I don't know if we talked about it last time, but with all the heavy rains, uh, that we've had, uh, I don't believe we had any issues with flooding. In any, in any of the neighborhoods, I know we didn't see any in Stony Brook. And again, that's a direct reflection of the work that, that Kimmy and Chris and staff have done and, and, uh, fixing problems that we've had, uh, existing. But also looking out, uh, for, you know, worst case scenarios and being prepared in these events. And that's just one example. So I want to compliment the board, uh, the, the staff for everything that they've done, uh, in those positions. So welcome new board, um, and that's all that I have for, for tonight. If there's nothing else, we can adjourn. So I will call the meeting adjourned at five-ten, let the record show that we're, uh, twenty minutes ahead of our five-thirty projected.
That's a new trend.
Thank you, everyone.